This regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. This time I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor Garcia for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to remain standing just for a few moments in light of Veterans Day that we just celebrated recently and the election that we just passed. And I would like to thank again all of our veterans who have served this country and those who continue to serve to allow us to participate in these free elections to make these decisions. And I want to thank everyone who ran, whether they won or lost, everyone who was impactful in being a part of this community. We're so grateful for that. So again, thank you and if we could take a moment of silence again for our veterans and those who are currently serving in our military.
All right, we have an agenda before us. Any changes?
Move to approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. As submitted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion. No, thank you. The agenda?
Oh, sorry.
This is just the agenda.
I guess I'll...
I started to accept it.
I was a little over on that one. Sorry.
All righty.
I was really offended by that one. Sorry.
All right, now we're going to move on where we got abstentions. Approval of the minutes. We'll start with October 16th, which is the work session minutes. Any changes? Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve is submitted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Abstain.
All right. Motion carries. And next set of minutes is from the October 23 regular scheduled meeting. Any input? Motion?
Move to approve the 23 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from October 23. As submitted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is a public hearing. Beaver Creek Animal Hospital rezoning. This is the second reading and also a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this was, had a public hearing last meeting. Presentation was done. There, the ordinance itself was properly advertised, but the letters individually within so many feet of the properties went out after the 15 days before the, included the 15 days, so they didn't get enough time. So we are extending this as a second, if you will, call public hearing, if anybody was wishing to speak on it. But then we will be able, if council's willing, to approve this. I don't think any changes. There's been no changes to the case. Have we heard any other feedback? Okay. So no, there has been no more feedback or no changes in the presentation from last meeting.
Okay. No public input from the...
No public...
No public... All right. All right, well, this is, this is the time for the public hearing. If there's anyone present tonight that would like to address council on this application, please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And any further input from council? All right, this is ordinance 23-27, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Bales, to which you'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
Move to approve ordinance 23-27.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-27. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, under resolution, ordinance resolutions and PUDs, ordinance 23-28.
Ordinance 23-28, an ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council amending Chapter 33, Departments, Boards, and Commissions of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Beaver Creek by repealing the old section labeled Beaver Creek Youth Development Committee, codified at sections 33.20 through 33.24 of the Beaver Creek Codified Ordinances and adopting a new section labeled Beaver Creek Youth Council Advisory Committee to change the name of the committee and to clarify the related ordinances.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Adams?
Motion to approve ordinance 23-28.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 23-28. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Decision items: acceptance, acceptance of the third quarter financial summary.
Yeah, here we go.
That's one of the undertones you're not going to hear. Not sure how to take that, quite frankly. I go either way, really, so. I'm not going to bore you repeating everything that's in my report, but I do want to say a couple of things that will require your action in the near future because we've had a probably historic number of rounds at the golf course this year. We also, now that we're past the COVID stage and our programming at the park and rec area has exploded again, and we're doing a lot more programming and, again, with the programming, a lot of that has to do with the contractors we have giving the programming. And we had to hire additional staff for the summer camps. What's actually going to happen is that those departments and funds are actually going to exceed what you originally appropriated in the beginning of the year. And so what you'll see at the next meeting is that I'll be adjusting that. I'll be asking you for additional appropriations to cover them for the rest of the year because of those variable expenses that go with the success of those programs. But we'll be certifying the revenue that was generated from those additional programs and the number of rounds of golf. So just wanted to let you know that, again, we're having a really good year in especially golf and, again, hats off to the park and rec folks and their programming skills and getting the word out and getting those programs up and running to, you know, coin an extensive increase from the previous years. And again, that all comes with additional costs. But again, we normally budget for a normal year, and when things like this happen, it's a positive effect. But again, it does create a little bit more work for us to recognize that and to make sure that we don't exceed our budget, so. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the details in here. I painstakingly went through it as Chuck reminded us that, here I go again. This is, you know, again, it's, it's been a pleasure actually doing these for a change. I mean, I've been here long enough where these kind of reports, you know, were just something we look forward to in the future sometime, and it looks like they're, we're finally getting over the hump of all the pandemic and everything like that. And folks are, residents are recognizing that we have some great programs out there and great recreational facilities, so. But happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Here we go again. You got anything? Councilmember Schwartz? Anything over here?
No, it's just nice to hear those positive things. It's, it's, it's good to hear.
Long time coming.
All right. Do we have a motion to accept the third quarter financial report?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the third quarter financial report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we did have a request, I know, to see, know when it was going to be posted, and I understand it'll be posted.
Typically tomorrow.
Typically tomorrow. Correct? All right, very good. Next is the 2024 OPRA Conference, and I think I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Bales.
Yes, I'd like to make a request to allow me to attend the 2024 OPRA Conference. It's in Sandusky, Ohio, in February. Two days, I'll be there for two days. The conference registration is $340, and the total hotel's around $256, so less than $600. I've gone the last few years. I think it's a good representation for the city to be there and bring back some good information about upcoming park trends and so forth. And we do have it included in our budget.
Discussion? If not, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Oh, go ahead.
Move to approve Councilmember Bales' attendance at the 2024 OPRA Conference?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Councilmember Bales attending the 2024 OPRA Conference. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Council time. Councilmember Curran, you've got anything you want to tell us about today?
No, just a few things, Your Honor. Certainly the jail groundbreaking. Many of us were present at that, which was a momentous occasion to finally get that off the ground. And there was, the governor was there, as we all know, and it was a little wet that day, but just a great opportunity to see some progress in that area. Also attended a function for Sheriff Anger. He's going to be running for reelection, and it was a nice turnout for that. Attended the first Thursday, Your Honor, at the Pasha Grill. It was a really, really good turnout of people and...
Don't look at me.
Well, the first lady was there.
That's true.
And she spoke in your behalf, Your Honor.
Yeah, it was very good.
Attended the Halloween lunch at the Senior Citizens. That was a real hoot. Some fascinating costumes and just a good time that everybody had at that particular event. Recently attended Citizens Police Academy graduation over at Senior Citizens. It was really nice to see the number of people that we have in that class, and I want to congratulate the department and the chief for all the efforts that they put forward to get the word out, and hopefully the next class will be, will be even bigger. And last, I certainly want to congratulate those who were elected. Our Vice Mayor, or our Mayor-elect, excuse me, I'll get it right, Mayor Adams, and then also Councilmember Bales. Want to congratulate them. Great election. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz?
Thank you. I also attended the jail groundbreaking, which was a great event. I do wish it would have been slightly drier.
A little bit.
Just a little wet, but a wonderful addition to the community, and I think it's going to be a great project, so looking forward to seeing that coming in the future. And we also had a Region 14 meeting. We are still kind of in the throes of how these proposals are going to come in. Right now, we have gotten some updates from the state level. They have an executive director selected. There's a little bit more of a path forward. We now have a contractor that's building the software that will accept those proposals. And so the original intention was that we would have proposals in this month. That's not going to happen. We're not going to see anything, at least until next year. So in that vein, I had proposed at our last board meeting that perhaps we have a half-day meeting to discuss the way forward because our meetings are kind of a little all over the place, and so the group took that suggestion. So we're going to be meeting for a half-day to kind of really evaluate what our priorities are for this region and how we are going to incorporate those factors as we are evaluating our proposals. So if anyone has any input on that, please don't hesitate to reach out or contact me. And last, but certainly last least, I went to the Women's League event where they had Violence Free Futures give a outstanding presentation. Again, I've said this a thousand times, but we are so very blessed to have them in our community. And so now that it is around the giving season, if you are looking for somewhere to donate, I would highly encourage Violence Free Futures. It's a wonderful facility. They do great work, and it's just an integral part of our community. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, very good. Councilmember Bales?
Oh, thank you. I'd like to start off by thanking all the veterans that serve our country. Obviously, this weekend was a great remembrance of that and appreciate, even though I wasn't at the ceremony, I appreciate the city putting on the ceremony. Did attend the Beaver Creek Historical Society's annual meeting and would like to thank them for their efforts at Wardenger Park and try and find, fund the next phase of that barn improvement project. I too would like to congratulate the graduates of the Citizen Police Academy. That was a great program, and I'd like to thank the staff of the police department who, who put that on. I attended the Violence Free Futures donor appreciation dinner last week, and like Councilwoman Schwartz, want to really express my thanks to the citizens who support their efforts, but then also their staff at that agency who does such a great job for Green County. This week at, on Thursday at 1:00 is the next Golf Advisory Board meeting, and Councilman Doer and I are both unavailable to attend. So if anybody's interested in attending on behalf of council, it's at the golf course at 1:00 on Thursday, if you let me know, I'll send you the agenda. But both of us unfortunately can't make it. I also want to thank everyone who exercised their right to vote last week. I too want to congratulate the candidates who were successfully elected, and I want to thank all of you for your support during the campaign. I want to encourage all of those who were not elected to stay active in our community. There were a lot of great conversations and debates throughout the last six or eight weeks, and I think that we can all learn from some of the comments that were made. I heard a lot of input about affordability in our community, property taxes, income taxes, programs, services, and our city budget seemed to kind of rise to the top of all the conversations throughout the campaign, and I want to thank those people who provided that input. But furthermore, I want to encourage them to pick up a copy of our proposed 2024 budget. It's going to be on our website tomorrow, I believe. There's a copy of it here at City Hall, and so everything is right there, laid out before you, where we can be as transparent as, as possible with every single dollar figure. So, you know, the budgets, work sessions begin Wednesday, and they are open to the public, and I think there was just a lot of conversation about that. So I just think it's important to reiterate the fact that that budget is out there and we are listening. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving because we won't have another regular scheduled council meeting. We'll have a work session next week, but we won't have one before Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving and go Bucks, beat that team up north.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Doer?
I want to say thank you to council. I was away for the last nine or so days out of the country, and so thanks for attending various events in my wake. Had the opportunity to go to Bangladesh with some members of my church and a very neat trip, working with an NGO that, in rural villages, promotes women's literacy and preschool education. So that was very neat to see. Also, good opportunity to chat with a mayor of a village on an island in the middle of a large river, so a good connection point on swapping stories about local government in Bangladesh was kind of a fun one for me personally. But I do want to thank all of council for attending events in my wake, and forgive me for tonight because my body feels like it's still 5:15 a.m. right now, so it's a bit of jet lag there. Prior to leaving, I did lead two talks in Green County, one in Beaver Creek, one in Cedarville, on what's happening in the Middle East, and so thank you to all that attended those events. I too would like to thank the veterans and to echo Vice Mayor Garcia's great comments at the beginning today because they're just, there's, there are no elections, there's no free opportunities for us in society without them, and so they're so integral to us, and big thank you from all of us. And then finally, I want to thank everyone for voting. Candidates that won, lost, I want to congratulate Mayor-elect Adams, Vice Mayor-elect Bales, Councilmember Curran, and Councilmember-elect Littrell. Look forward to working with all of you and to thank those that ran did not win. Democracy depends on those that participate, and sometimes you fall short, but it's just an equally important component in giving people options and being a part of the selection process. Thank you to everyone involved there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too attended the groundbreaking for the New County Jail. It's, that's been a long time coming, and it's really definitely needed. It's, they tell us we should be able to go to the ribbon cutting in two years, so we'll see what we can do there. They said that several times. I was also able to attend the ribbon cutting for Heartfulness Museum at the Fairfield Mall, and that was an interesting experience. They moved into the old veterans' rest area there at the mall, and they offer a place to, to sit and just relax if you're shopping, so it's going to, music and different things to do there. I'd like to thank the Pizza Dive for their, their work within the community. I know they held an event for the candidates, so they could be celebrity servers, but they continued, Mike and Amy Jones continued what J.R. and Teresa Garcia started, and they're very big in, in helping the city, and they're always out there. In fact, the proceeds from that night went to Feed the Creek, so it was, it was a good, good deal. I was able to attend and graduated from the Rotary Leadership Institute. That's a year-long training which I was able to do and graduated on November 4th. Election Day was interesting. I'm glad it turned out the way it did, but thank you all for voting and exercising your rights. I mean, so there was a lot of people who voted here in Beaver Creek, and I think it was almost 60%, so, which is really good. I too attended the Citizens Police Academy, class number 20. It's hard to believe that we had that many of those. You know, those guys heard from officers, command staffs, judges, prosecutors about how the justice system works in Green County and in Beaver Creek. They do ride-along, spend time in dispatch, and have demonstrations by our K-9, and also had the opportunity to go to the range and shoot. So we will be having another one of those sometime next year, and I encourage anyone that's interested to please come and be a part of that. Just like the Citizens Academy that were held here, it gives people a better understanding of what the police department does or what the city does. I mean, there's a lot of information comes out of there. I was able to go to, was honored to be invited to Columbus this past Thursday, I think it was. Mayor Paul Keller from Fairborn was inducted into the Ohio Veterans Hall of Fame. Our own mayor, Bob Stone, was inducted last year, and that's quite an honor. It's, it's recognizing people, not for their service, but what they did after their service for their communities. And this past Saturday, I was able to attend the Beaver Creek Veterans Day Ceremony. Again, Mayor Stone did an amazing job putting that together and hosting it. There was a lot of people there for that, and it was really a, a nice event. I too was at the Violence Free Futures donor appreciation dinner, and as has already been stated, that's an organization that, I serve on the board of that, and it's just an amazing organization, what they do for all of the abuse people out there. It's really good, so. And I'll finish that with saying happy Thanksgiving because next week is Thanksgiving, so I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving and has an opportunity to spend some time with their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes, thank you. So I actually have the honor of reading the anniversaries tonight, so I don't know if you want to start there? Yeah, great, let's start with that. As always, I think all we do up here is sing the praise and gratitude for our staff. They are absolutely outstanding. This city would not run without the amazing volunteers and people we have on staff, and I have the honor of reading anniversaries for a few of them. So Teresa Hathaway in finance, 14 years of service. Daniel Crawl with the police, 22 years of service. Dave Majorsak with the police, 22 years of service. Tanisha Carroll, police, one year of service. That's a great achievement there. Just happy to have someone on for a new year. It's always an exciting time. Ted Gebhardt, golf, five years. Mr. Mormon, 26 years with public services and city engineers. Jessica Nuffman in finance for, again, her first year, which is great. Scott Skaggs, public services for four years. Trevor Hawley, another one year for the police department. And Christopher Brownlee, 11 years with the police department. So thank you for all of our employees, all of our staff, for all of your hard work over the years. Those are some amazing numbers up there, and always exciting to see the first-year anniversary mark for so many employees. A few things I want to talk about. I was able to attend a leadership training conference in Memphis a few weeks ago, and it was called Be Resilient Leader. It was really fantastic ways to use the strengths that we currently have to continue leading our communities and in our organizations, and I thought it was a really meaningful time, so I appreciate the opportunity to attend that. I also, in almost completely opposite fashion, attended a day at the gun range with the Beaver Creek Women's League over here at Midwest Shooting Center. It was great. I was able to go on the Ohio State-Penn State game, so there I don't think was a better controlled environment for me to be during that game than in a locked-in gun range, but it was great. Beaver Creek Women's League continues to have some amazing events, and looking forward to the upcoming meeting here in a few weeks. And then I attended a few meetings for MDRPC since we last met, so one of the updates I want to talk about is the Greater Regional Mobility Initiative Plan that we have for an update for 2024. This is going to be for additional funding through the FTA, and this is for planning designed to meet the needs of our older adults and those with disabilities when the transportation provided is either unavailable, insufficient, or inappropriate to meet their needs. So what we're doing is taking a look at plans for the greater Miami Valley region, over eight counties, and having designated travel routes. They're going to have a specific council with quarterly meetings, open to all, to help strategize and implement plans in place, and to highlight the needs of the population for those who can't afford access or drive. So we're going to have, has this be a stakeholder-led plan where the council's going to, you know, come one, come all, with a plan and ideas to help those who are directly impacted, but I think this will be a great way to try, again, help those where, you know, if the bus stops, we, how do we make those more, how do we help those people with accessibility issues, use the bus stops, or people helping navigate the transportation options in the community, and then preventative maintenance as well. So we're going to keep an eye on those initiative plans for the Greater Regional Mobility updates in 2024. And that's about it for me.
All right, very good. I'm going to keep it brief. The, a lot of the comments are, are the programs that were already mentioned, some I attended and some I didn't have the opportunity, but they're all good, and most of us have participated wherever we can, and that's always great. I want to start off, though, by thanking staff for the Veterans Day preparations, Parks Department and our video department in the back, and just everybody that was involved in the Veterans Day, our COPPs. We had a huge crowd. It was one of, one of the larger crowds, and it, so I was very pleased. We had a nice speaker. We tried something a little different this year where we had a little more interaction with those that were present, and so you felt more touched by going around shaking hands and talking to people. We did that for about 15 minutes before we actually started the ceremony, and that, we had six or seven officers from around the world that were there as well, and that, this is, they're not their first time, but some of the individuals, it's their first time, but it's not the first time that group that's stationed at Wright-Patt generally for three-year cycles comes in and joins us, and the crowd loves it, we love it, and so there was a lot of good interaction on this Veterans Day. So again, thanks staff for taking care of that. The only thing not mentioned that I attended was the Beaver Creek High School Music Department's cabaret performance, which was also on Veterans Day. So it, we had the Veterans Day at 2:00, and then the cabaret started at 7:30 and ended at about 10:00 or later, and so made for a long day, but it was really wonderful, and they do a fantastic job. Just being there and showing the support for those kids is great. You know, I too just want to congratulate everybody that was on the ballot, as if you've heard already, and I'm just repeating that that is the process, and that's what we encourage. Some years, we don't have more people than there are seats that run. But, so it's always gratifying to see that there are more people on the ballot than there are seats available. So please keep that up and always give people a choice. I look forward to passing this seat on to the mayor-elect and being able to sit at home and watch on TV. But, so, we'll talk more about that next month. Anyway, I think I'll end there and turn it over to City Managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the mayors and managers last week.
Yes, we did.
At Wright-Patterson Air Force Base was the, was the host. Great event. Residents are encouraged to participate in cities' budget work sessions, as was mentioned, but it starts this Wednesday at 5:00. but it starts this Wednesday at 5:00, 15th, and then following Monday on the 20th. Both begin at 5:00, as we said, right here. The session provides opportunity for residents to actively engage Beaver Creek City Council and staff to gain insights to the city's financial planning and provide input. As Councilmember Bales did say, the proposed 2024 budget is available already on the website. It's under City News, the article about the budget work sessions. It's already been loaded there, and tomorrow it'll be loaded under the agenda material as well. So a couple of different locations. It's a big file, so don't be surprised if it takes your computer a minute to download it. Winner at, welcome at Wardinger Park. This is always a, has been, started a few years back, and it's just taken off, and then COVID hit, and we had to be creative, but it's back, and we're actually doing this at night this time. Well, it doesn't get, take long to get dark, so I wouldn't call it night at 5:00, but it'll almost be dark by then. So Friday, December 15th, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Wardinger Park, 3080 Kemp Road. So visit from Santa Claus and live reindeer. I'm told they're real, so.
They are.
I'll just go from there. They look real to me, yes, when I see them. I enjoy cookies, hot cocoa, as well stroll through the park, and admire the beautiful decorated cabins. I will give all of them a plug, the Historical Society, Kiwanis, Optimist Club. Who am I missing? I know, once I started naming them, there's at least those three, and there's others, I believe. They take turns decorating, oh, the library.
Oh.
Yeah, the library, Green County Library decorates. They take turns decorating and lighting up the cabins at, at Wardinger Park, and they look beautiful. Staff does the trees and the walkways and different areas, but it's very beautiful, and we'll be able to see that better this time come around because of the time of day. So please come. A variety of dinner options available purchase from food trucks. That is a new addition this year, so figuring 5:00, people might get hungry, and cookies and hot cocoa may not just do it, so we'll have some food choices there for you. So please come out, and also you'll be voting for your favorite cabin, favorite decoration using the phone and a QR code at the park. So it's a good time. Also, I will say that this will be open to the public December 1st through January 1st. So the event is December 15th from 5:00 to 8:00. But the, looking at the decorations, just come into the park, looking at the decorations, and voting for your favorite will be open from December 1st through January 1st. So at, during, have a good time, bring the kids out then as well. Beaver Creek gift certificates. I know a lot of gifts are given, but a lot of people may not think about this, but you have the golf, Beaver Creek Golf Club and Beaver Creek Parks and Recreation. Both have gift certificates available for the golf club, for the fan of the average golfer that you may have in your family, and not only that, but the gift shop as well. And then Parks and Recreation, we have gift certificates for all the programming that we have throughout the years that you can have a gift certificate to give somebody for programming that will happen in 2024. So please keep that in mind, and you can contact the city parks or golf department for those gift certificates. And this is a good thing to have for those that like live trees, and they bring the whole root ball. Has to be a live tree, can't be a cut tree, but there are some that use a cut, a ball where it's, continues to be a live tree, and what we can do, instead of discarding it and throwing it away, we have a program that we can take it from you. The root ball must be intact, and cut trees, again, cannot be accepted, but what we'll do is take this and plant it on city property in a park somewhere. So after holidays, contact the city parks division, parks@beavercreekohio.gov or 427-5514 to schedule a pickup time. We'll come get it for you. Your holiday tree will find its new home in a city park. And that's all I have tonight.
All right. Well, I'm going to back up just one second. Councilmember Bales and I hosted the Scouts in here, the Cub Scouts, a couple, a week and a half or so ago. And as always, and the reason I wanted to go ahead and bring that up is to anybody that's listening, if you have a scout troop, a girl scout troop, a boy scout troop, a cub scout troop, it doesn't matter, any of these youth groups that want to learn about local government, the new council will be just as eager as I have been over the years to do that, and it's so much fun. I mean, we just enjoy it, and, uh, so, thanks to the scouts that we entertained. Did you have something you wanted to add to that?
So yesterday, I dropped my daughter off for a birthday party at the bowling alley, and I'm walking out of the bowling alley, and somebody, somebody pulled on my shirt, and I looked down, and it's, he goes, "I know you, mister." And I said, "Well, I know you too." He says, "Were you at my soccer game?" And I said, "No, you were a Cub Scout, and you sat right in the vice mayor's chair." And he said, "Ah, that's where I remember you from."
And they actually, we had them elect their mayor this time, so it was a, and they actually did a fantastic job. The mayor that sat here did a nice job, the young fellow. All right, I'm sorry, I backed up a minute, but I wanted to get that out there. All right, next on the agenda is citizen comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue whatsoever? If there is, please come forward. Seeing none, we will move on. May I get a motion to enter into executive session, please?
Mayor, I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of consideration of the appointment, promotion, or compensation of a public employee or official in preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Duer.
Yes.
Mayor Stone.
Yes. And there will be no decision coming from this executive session. We will reconvene in order to adjourn, but we will reconvene if you wish to wait around, but there'll be no action taken after this executive session. So thank you very much, and we are in executive session.